All right, good evening. If everybody could have a seat. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome our chaplain, Rupko Bromlett, for to lead us in invocation.
I'll wait just a second.
Meet you too, Mark.
Please join me in prayer. Our God in heaven, looking back to the year 2013, we are deeply grateful for all the good things that happened in our community and for your presence in the more painful things. And we especially pray that you be the God of all comfort to those who lost loved ones in the final months of this year. Looking ahead in 2014, we are excited about a banner year of what will happen in this community in development, in decision-making, in improvement of quality of life. And to that end, we ask that you bless the city council and the mayor and the city departments that serve this city with wisdom, with grace, and discernment in managing the affairs of our citizens. We pray that your hand of restraint will keep us free from evil and crime, and that you empower the police department and the fire department as they serve the community, as well as all the other departments that faithfully exercise their duties on behalf of the citizens. We ask this for the well-being of our citizens and for your glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. I'd like to call the regular meeting for the Milton City Council for Monday, January 6, 2014, to order. And the first item up for business is to administer the oath of office to myself and Councilmember Thurman and Councilmember Lusk. Councilmember Longoria is absent tonight, and we'll do them at a later date, but if Councilmember Lusk and Thurman want to join me, I've got Judge Hansford up here so we can make this official before we get started.
First, I'd like to say what a distinct pleasure it is. I take a notice that the three people that I'm swearing in tonight are three people who have been here since the inception of the city, as have I. So it's somewhat special night for me in that reflecting back to 2007, I would now be swearing in three people who have been around since the very beginning. Mayor Lockwood, if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joe Lockwood, do solemnly swear and affirm
I, Joe Lockwood, do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will faithfully perform the duties of
that I faithfully perform the duties of
mayor of this city
mayor of this city
and that I will support and defend the charter thereof
that I will support and defend the charter thereof
as well as the Constitution
as well as the Constitution
and laws of the state of Georgia
and laws of the state of Georgia
and of the United States of America
and of the United States of America.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Thurman, how are you tonight?
I'm good.
If you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Karen Thurman, do solemnly swear and affirm
I, Karen Thurman, do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will faithfully perform the duties of
that I will faithfully perform the duties of
councilmember of this city
councilmember of this city
and that I will support and defend the charter thereof
that I will support and defend the charter thereof
as well as the Constitution
as well as the Constitution
and the laws of the state of Georgia
and the laws of the state of Georgia
and of the United States of America
and of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lusk. Also, might I say, is it is a pleasure to swear you in once again as a fellow veteran of the Armed Services. I think we share that in common. Councilmember Lusk, if you would, please repeat after me. I, William Lusk, do solemnly swear and affirm
I, William Lusk, do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will faithfully perform the duties of
that I will faithfully perform the duties of
councilmember of this city
councilmember of this city
and that I will support and defend the charter thereof
and I will support and defend the charter thereof
as well as the Constitution
as well as the Constitution
and laws of the state of Georgia
and laws of the state of Georgia
and of the United States of America
and of the United States of America. So help me God.
So help you, God. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Hansford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now we're legal. If the city clerk, please sound the next item.
Our next item this evening is election of the mayor pro tem. Mayor Lockwood.
Our charter, the mayor pro tem, who serves as my replacement if I can't be present at something, is to be selected and changed once a year or at the beginning of the term. And fittingly, Councilmember Thurman, Councilmember Lusk, Councilmember Hewitt have served and done a great job as mayor pro tem. So basically, I would like to recommend and submit Councilmember Longoria, who has been here the longest out of everybody else, as our mayor pro tem for this coming year. So I'd open up for a motion. A second for Councilmember Longoria.
I'll make a motion to support Councilmember Longoria as mayor pro tem.
Second.
Got a motion. Councilmember, good second by Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And we'll have to swear him in when I believe he's out of town. City clerk, please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll be happy to call roll for the January 6, 2014, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Bert Hewitt, Councilmember Joe Longoria are traveling and absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to take a moment, just welcome everybody here tonight. We appreciate you being here. Got a lot of volunteers and a lot of community members. I do want to just say that it's an honor and a privilege to be re-elected as mayor, to not only work with the group of councilmembers and our staff, but also to serve the citizens that are here tonight. So I thank you very much for that, as well as I'm sure the rest of the council feels the same. Our city clerk, would please sound the next item on the meeting agenda.
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. Agenda item number 14-001.
Okay. I've got, I would like to, if it's okay with council, we've got several committee members in here tonight that we are going to swear in and vote on, and I'd like to move that up to maybe before or before some presentations, just so that those folks can, since there's so many people here, they can get that moved up. And our staff would like to add an emergency item, the last item of new business, for consideration of a resolution of the city of Milton, Georgia enacting an emergency moratorium for 30 days to bar the acceptance of applications for rezonings to the CUP, NUP, TR, R2, and R2A zoning districts. Is there any other items that either staff or council may want to add to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I've got just one as a cleanup. The items that you're moving under new business are actually items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7. Item 3, which is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals for District 3 Post 2, we'd like to defer until January 22nd. So take that and move it to 22nd, move the others until after first presentation.
Right. Any other changes? If not, we'll have a motion on the agenda as read with the changes.
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as prepared by staff with modifications.
Motion for Councilmember Lusk, second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or the members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for your remarks. And do we have any general public comment, Sudi?
Yes, sir, we have one.
Okay.
And that would be from Mr. Jack Linden.
Good evening. My name is Jack Linden. I live at 14810 East Bluff Road in the subdivision of North Valley. I want to, I'm sure that most of you on the city council know that I'm chairman of the Milton Environmental Sustainability Committee, Milton Rose Green, but I want to make it clear that tonight I'm speaking for myself, not for the committee, which hasn't had a chance to address some of these issues yet. The issue I wanted to address tonight is the issue of Milton's growth and protecting its rural character. I was pleased a couple of weeks ago, a week or so ago, to see a letter in the Milton Herald written by Mayor Lockwood addressing some of these issues and stating his concern and the fact that there was a movement to actually get some new changes made in the city to address some of these issues. You may not know that my involvement in environmental issues goes back a good long ways. I was on the North Andover Massachusetts Conservation Commission in the 80s and late 70s. And conservation commissions in the state of Massachusetts are actually promulgated by state law. There's a Massachusetts state law called the Wetlands Protection Act. And the role of these conservation commissions, which are established in every community in the state, is to enforce the Wetlands Protection Act and to essentially regulate the subdivision and other types of growth in the various cities. So in that role, I was involved, along with the other members of the committee, in promulgating and implementing a conservation subdivision bylaw. That was, we did that in the mid 80s. There's, it's a fairly complicated piece of legislation, but a couple of key points. Basically, the bylaw, if it was adopted by a developer, the subdivision in question would be limited in the sense that 40 to 50 percent of that subdivision would be maintained as open space. Therefore, the house lots would become smaller and closer together. Another very important element of this was that various aspects of environmental sensitivity were taken into account. That was the first part of the law, the first thing the developer and the development department did together was to look at the site, see where the environmentally sensitive land was, and then essentially construct a subdivision with those considerations in mind. Now, I want to point out that there were, the way we constructed the law, there were a number of very interesting advantages for the developer. The first one was that this gave him the opportunity to look at the land and to use it in a way that was most advantageous in terms of what could be built on and what couldn't be built on. So he was able to avoid steep slopes, wetlands, all those sorts of things. The other thing was that these kinds of subdivisions, since you're clustering the houses together, would provide ways, would provide the developer with a significant reduction in his infrastructure costs, shorter roads, shorter sewer, well, in our case, we had sewers in North Andover, shorter sewer lines, and that sort of thing. So that was a big advantage for the developer. And lastly, to make it even sweeter for the developers, we in North Andover put in a clause in this that allowed for a 10 percent bonus. So if you had, for example, a lot that was close to 50 acres, and normal one-acre zoning would allow you to put in 50 houses, you would be able to put in 55 units in that subdivision. And that was another advantage for the developer.
One minute remaining.
The point I wanted to make about these was that there's a number of advantages to these subdivisions, conservation subdivisions. You preserve open space and forested areas. You preserve roadway view sheds and overall maintain the highly desirable character of Milton, the rural character of Milton. There are some more subtle benefits, things like the smaller lots are easier to maintain, which could be attractive to retirees and young families, and also that the closer proximity of the houses would provide a greater sense of community for these subdivisions. So that's basically all I wanted to say. I hope these sorts of subdivisions are considered in, as we move forward in the city with the kind of planning we're doing with the extensive development that's occurring. Thank you.
Thank you. And not to respond directly to Mr. Linden, but on that same subject, as I did writing my letter, we are looking at several options. And as you can see by one of the changes we put on our agenda tonight with a resolution having to do with CUPs and whatnot, that's just a sign that we are looking at several options and are very interested in doing that. So thank you for your comment. Okay, do we have any other public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, Sudi, if you'll please read the items.
First item is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Universal Engineering Sciences, Inc., for a Phase 1 environmental site assessment. Agenda item number 14-002. Our next consent agenda item is approval of the financial statements for the period ending November 2013. Agenda item number 14-003. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a release and settlement agreement between the city of Milton and AT&amp;T. Agenda item number 14-004.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, tonight, we don't have any items under reports and presentations, but before we go to our first presentation, as I asked for in our agenda, I would like to move up the vote and swearing in of our volunteers on our boards. So if our city clerk could go to item number 2 on resolution appointing or reappointing members of the city to the Milton Board of Zoning Appeals for District 1, 2, and looks like, and my appointee at large.
This is agenda item number 14-008, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Yeah, and that would be for District 1, James Hilli; District 2, Walt Recuck; and my appointee at large would be Gary Willis. So on appointing those three individuals, does council have any questions? We'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve your appointments.
Okay. And the motion would be to James Hilli, Walt Recuck, and Gary Willis.
Okay. James Hilli, Walt Recuck.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Koontz, second from Councilmember Morick.
Any discussion?
Hearing none. And I just want to say this, I should have said this before, just want to thank you guys for your time and commitment, and that's what makes Milton special, and you guys do a ton of work, and sometimes you get credit for it, sometimes you don't, sometimes you get credit you don't want. But we appreciate all the effort and the time. It means a lot to us and a lot to our citizens. So I think I have a first and a second. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ken, is it okay if I go ahead? Should I need to give the oath to those individuals, or can we go through and vote and then do all the?
Sorry, you can wait till all of them are done.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move on to the next resolution, appointing a member to the city of Milton Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals for District 3, which would be, okay, that's right, that's District 3, we moved.
But my appointee was here for that.
Yes, we do have Don Lee.
So we've got, I've got District 1, Bill Newell; District 2, Mike Doyle; District 3, Scott Ponder; and then also Don Lee. So I'll, do I have a motion, appointing Bill Newell, Mike Doyle, Scott Ponder, and Don Lee?
Mr. Mayor, I've got to call a timeout here, and that's just because that's not what this agenda item references in its advertisement. It references that we were only appointing somebody to District 3 Post 2. And that item has been deferred by motion and vote to the January 22 meeting. So I don't believe that there is an agenda item on tonight that allows you to take that action that you just took. So I regretfully, I think we need to republish that on January the 22nd.
Is there a way, Chris or Ken, that we can, if nothing, could we, probably can't swear them in if we haven't voted on them formally, can we? But I'm just trying to think so that these bitches don't have to come back.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, the agenda has been adopted, and that was specifically taken off. There's no agenda item.
All right, well, I'll apologize to those individuals. We will have to reschedule for the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Mr. Newels, Doyle, Ponder, and Mr. Lee. So fortunately
We'll get another kick.
The technicality, we'll have to, gives you another chance to come hang out with us.
I'd just hate to do something at this point.
Now, I will say this, in consideration of your time, at our next meeting, we can vote on that. If you can't make it, or it's not convenient, you don't have to be here, we can vote on it. And at any time, I can come to you and swear you in. You can stop by City Hall, whatever, we can make it convenient for you, so you don't have to come and attend another meeting just for that. So if that helps, we will recognize that you guys are here, and we thank you for your work and all, and we can do the formality later, and you don't have to be here if you don't want to. I'm assuming I'm correct, Ken?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you are. That's right.
All right. Let's see, we will move on to the resolution appointing, reappointing members of the city of Milton Design Review Board for District 1, Marty Littleton; District 2, Steve Check; District 3, Laura Weisong; and my appointee, Bruce Smitherman.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Bruce Smitherman, Marty Littleton, Steve Check, and Laura Weisong to the Design Review Board.
Second motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Next, number five, a consideration of a resolution appointing or reappointing members to the city of Milton Planning Committee for District 1. Peyton Jamison, which I think I saw a picture of him in council where we're here, getting on a plane somewhere. District 2, Terry Hare; District 3, Chris Doughty, and Paul Moore, my appointee. So any questions or have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve to the Milton Planning Commission, Paul Moore, Peyton Jamison, Terry Hare, and Chris Doughty.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Koontz, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is a consideration of a resolution appointing or reappointing members of the city of Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for District 1, Post Mark Reed; District 2, Sue Reddick; District 3, Scott Stahowski; and then David Shannon is my appointee. Do I have a motion, appointing those individuals or reappointing?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number 14-012, consideration of a resolution appointing or reappointing members of the city of Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And next item is a consideration of a resolution appointing or reappointing members of the city of Milton Historic Preservation Committee. District 2, I have Norman Broadwell, and at large, Abby Laboda. Anyone have any questions on that? If not, I have a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the appointment of Norman Broadwell and Abby Laboda to the Historic Planning Commission, agenda item number 14-013.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion, Councilmember Lusk, second, Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that's unanimous.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've been keeping track here, I just want to make sure this was by design and not, that it just weren't colored in on the chart. In the appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, it shows that Councilmember Longoria's appointee is Nancy Plasnarski. She was not made a part of that motion.
Okay.
As well as the Historic Preservation Commission, it shows his appointee is Travis Allen, and he was not made, is that by design, or do we need to go back and do this?
No, I don't believe so, unless
It is by design.
It is by design.
Longoria wants to do something later on.
Okay, so that's by design.
Okay, so that's on both of those. Okay.
Okay. All right, just wanted to point that out. Thank you. I think then you've accomplished everything we can do tonight.
Okay. And if Sudi, you will give me the oaths, and I'll, in order, then I'll call the folks up, and we'll do them by groups. Okay. If I could have the Board of Zoning Appeals appointee step forward. If you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Board of Zoning Appeals member of the city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. Thank you very much. Okay, if you guys would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm swear and affirm...
I solemnly swear and affirm.
...that I will faithfully perform the duties of...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
...the Design Review Board member...
Design Review Board member.
...of the city...
Of the city.
...and that I will support and defend the charter thereof...
Support and defend the charter thereof.
...as well as the Constitution...
As well as the Constitution.
...and laws of the state of Georgia...
And laws of the state of Georgia.
...and of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Thank you, Steve. You know, I want to add one thing, Mr. Bruce Smitherman here is my appointee, and it's a little extra special tonight to swear him in. Bruce is, is the proud recipient of a transplant and is doing very well, so it's an honor to see him here tonight. If you guys, did I just, Steve and Bruce, if you've got the sign. If you guys will raise your right hand, I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I solemnly swear and affirm.
...that I will faithfully perform the duties of...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
...the Planning Commission member...
The Planning Commission member.
...of the city...
Of the city.
...and that I will support and defend the charter thereof...
That I will support and defend the charter thereof.
...as well as the Constitution...
The laws of the Constitution.
...and laws of the state of Georgia...
And laws of the state of Georgia.
...and of the United States of America. This is for all you guys that think leading the council staff to all the work. Next, Parks and Recreation. Okay, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me, I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I solemnly swear and affirm.
...that I will faithfully perform the duties of...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
...the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member...
Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member.
...of the city...
Of the city.
...and that I will support and defend the charter thereof...
Support and defend the charter thereof.
...as well as the Constitution...
As well as the Constitution.
...and laws of the state of Georgia...
Laws of the state of Georgia.
...and of the United States of America. And for most of you know, if you read the papers, if all these guys have been getting a lot of stuff done here lately, so.
Yes, didn't even plan to come, as they just showed up.
It was Abby, and within the trial.
And I just wanted to come here.
On the agenda. Norm Broadwell. Is Norm or Abby here? All right, thank you guys. I believe that's it.
That's it.
And again, I just want to thank all our volunteers, we sincerely, both myself, my council, our staff, and our citizens appreciate your time and what you give to our city. So, and Sue, if you'll help me, we will go back to first presentation.
Our first item is consideration of RZ 1317, 13980, Freemanville Road by Fuqua and Associates, to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to CUP Community Unit Plan, to develop nine single-family residences on 16.98 acres. This is Agenda Item Number 14005, our second and final first presentation item, is consideration of RZ 1319, 13941 and 13943, Highway 9 North by Ashton Atlanta Residential LLC, to rezone from OI Office Institutional to TR Townhouse Residential, to develop 24 single-family residences, Agenda Item Number 14006.
Okay, do I have a motion, a second on first presentation items?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the reading of the first presentation as prepared by staff.
Second.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Loz, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have no items under public hearings or on the zoning agenda, so we're going to move to unfinished business. The City Clerk will please call that out.
Consideration of T1303, BC08, 330 Batesville Road by STC2 LLC, doing business as Crown Castle USA, to replace the existing 150-foot-high stealth-designed light pole telecommunications tower with a 190-foot-high monopine telecommunications tower and a two-part concurrent variance. First, to reduce the tower setbacks from adjacent property lines from 293 feet on all sides to A, 165 foot and 181 feet on the northwestern property lines, B, 175 feet on the northeastern property line, and C, 49 feet on the eastern property line, all as more particularly shown on the site plan filed herewith, Section 546D2. And second, to waive the 20-foot landscaping buffer requirement as the ground equipment on the site will be shielded by a wooded slatted fence and existing vegetation, Section 546E. This is Agenda Item Number 13297. First presentation was heard at the December 16, 2013 Regular City Council Meeting. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor, Council, I'll start a presentation tonight and then probably turn it over to whoever you'd like to hear from based upon your questions. But this application is for what we'll call, I'll call it right off the bat, and I'll continue to call it during the presentation, the dropping of the cell tower in Milton and swapping it with a different one. So if we use the term drop and swap, that's what we mean. There's a 150-foot-high tower that's on Batesville Road today, the request is to drop that tower and replace it with a 195-foot monopine. This application comes in conformance with the expedited process that is allowable in our code based upon incentivizing colocation. This is one of those that would replace an existing tower with a different one. As you recall, some time ago, we had a cell tower application come in at the rear of the Star Soccer Complex, an area of that property that was at its highest elevation, which happened to be embedded at the back of the property. Your desire at that point was to seek ways to potentially incentivize cell carriers to use existing towers rather than building new ones in Milton, and that application was withdrawn based upon our modification of the ordinance, which would suggest that we would rather have either extensions of existing towers or a new tower in an old tower's place, so long as several criteria are met, one of which is that the FAA lighting requirement is not triggered. That's the request to bring this tower at 195 feet. You've got the application there, you can see that this proposed tower is roughly 22 feet further towards Batesville Road than the existing tower. The existing tower exists as one version of stealth technology, what amounts to a light pole. The request is for a monopine, which is a tower that would look more like a large pine tree, and you can decide how much like a pine tree a large cell tower can look. This has met all the advertising requirements that are required by our code and the Zoning Procedures Act. The application is for, before you tonight, for your action or consideration or additional questions, or if you find that there's the ability for us to go in and maybe have a bit more discussion between the applicant and the community. I think, without getting to the end game, I think individually and collectively, I've talked to some of you that think that that might be the best place to get to, and I think that we would have consent to do that tonight, so long as we were on a fairly expedited timeline, so that this project, if it were to be approved, so it wouldn't be unduly delayed. Having said that, you've got the application, I'm happy to answer any questions, or the applicant is here, as well as members of the community, and I'm sure we'll hear from both of them in a public hearing.
Okay. Is there any questions for staff at this point before we hear from the applicant? Okay, if not, I'll open up this here to hear from those speaking in support, since we do have public hearing, so that everyone will be allowed to speak.
First in support, we have Carolyn Lotterbach.
Why don't we, why don't we hear from the applicant?
Ellen Smith, let's go with Ellen Smith.
Yeah, it would be there, yeah.
She's not looking behind her, but I'm right behind her. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Ellen Smith, I'm with Holt, Nate, Zach Coffin-Wasserman, it's a mouthful. And in the interest of keeping it short and maybe getting everyone to their football game that they might want to watch tonight, I do want to at least thank you for the opportunity to be here. As Chris indicated, this has been a long process. This particular site, my law firm zoned in 2003 with Mr. Bowen, who is here tonight, he's the property owner of this roughly 2.2-acre piece of property, he's owned the property since 1980, 34 years, if my math is correct, since we're in January, and that site was built under Fulton County's ordinance at 150 feet, and it has been operating very well for the past decade. There are three carriers on that existing tower, and AT&amp;T came in actually in 2009 and 2010, because they had a need to serve this area of the city as well, and they looked at extending that tower. It's not structurally sound to allow the existing 150 feet to be extended, it also wouldn't be tall enough to meet AT&amp;T's radio frequency needs. So, they came in with the Star Soccer application, the one I'll refer to as the Star Soccer application. That was for a 140-foot tower at the Star Soccer property that's roughly about 3,500 feet, linear feet, from this particular location. That application came in, in either late December or early January last year, and as a result of a number of comments from the Triple Crown Estates, from the community immediately around there, we went back to this site and said, okay, we'll look at it, and we'll look at whether we could do, as Chris said, a drop and swap. Can we take down the existing tower that's currently designed as a light pole? To give you an idea, it literally looks like a stick, and it has a couple of lights that hang off of it that are not lit, but it was one of the stealth facilities that Fulton County's ordinance allowed, it's also one that your city's ordinance would allow. We looked at that, we went through a modification of the ordinance that you all voted on in July, that would allow us to come through a process that's expedited. If we were able to show you that extending a tower or replacing a tower would avoid the location of a new tower or new steel in the sky in the city limits, and this application does meet those requirements. Just very briefly, I do want to let you know, the placement of the new proposed tower is, as Chris indicated, roughly 22 feet closer to Batesville Road, it still will meet all of the setback requirements or keep the same distance from our neighboring property owners to the northwest, to the southeast, and maintain as much distance from those neighbors as we can, given the rectangular shape of this property. I'm happy to discuss, and I know one of the comments that you all have heard is generator noise, just to give you an idea, there's an existing generator on site now, it is within Verizon's equipment shelter, that's shown on the site plans that you have. Generators for cell towers are tested weekly, they are generally tested for 30 minutes, AT&amp;Ts would be tested for 15 minutes at a time. Those time intervals can be set, so currently Verizon's runs between 10:00 AM and 11:00 AM on a certain day of the week, it's a weekday. If there is a request for somebody, you know, they want it to run earlier in the morning, later in the day, we can certainly do that. The Verizon one is located within their equipment shelter, the AT&amp;T one comes with sound deafening, a sound deafening piece of equipment on it, so that if you're standing within 15 feet of that generator, which is more than 100 feet, by the way, from any adjacent property line, you could have a normal conversation while the generator was running and not raise your voice at all and still be heard by the person you're speaking with, within 15 feet. It runs at 70 decibels, just if you're, if you care, interested, I can get into the technicalities of the sound, but the general point is, it doesn't run long, it doesn't run at night, and we haven't heard any complaints, Mr. Bowen can testify, in the past decade for many of his neighbors with respect to a sound issue. I certainly am happy to give you any background information. The other thing I know that has been a concern is the aesthetic design. We proposed a tree because of the stealth technologies or designs that were available. If you wanted a 200-foot silo, that's going to be a big thing in the sky compared to a tree. I did bring, and, and I appreciate that the tree will be taller than the existing tree cover, and I can certainly pass this up, but just to give you an idea, trees have come a long way in the past decade, they don't look like the sort of toilet brush that they looked like a decade ago, if I can be so blunt about it, they do have better foliage now, they are more full, that's to give you an idea, we picked that design because we thought it would match at least with the existing tree cover that's on site. Certainly, I think Councilmember Thurman had heard from folks that they said, why can't it just be a monopole with the antenna raised at the top? We certainly can do that. What we can't do is what's called a slick stick, where it's just a pole in the sky but has antennas inside the tower itself. The reason we can't do that is because it compromises coverage for all of those carriers. This tower, when rebuilt, will still have all of the existing carriers, so T-Mobile, Verizon, Sprint are currently on the site now, they will be relocated to this site, and they will be at a higher point on the tower, and then AT&amp;T will be at the top. The structure will allow for colocation of one more carrier, whether that be City 911 equipment, which I don't think you need because you've got a whole other plan, but certainly it's an opportunity, and the structure would be sound for that. If there was another carrier that came along, it's highly unlikely that would be the case because these carriers are the ones that have the majority of the FCC license for this area, but there's certainly an opportunity for that, and your ordinance encourages colocation, this would allow that colocation. I'm happy to address any questions that you might have. I have a team of folks that are here tonight, Mr. Bowen, who is our property owner, but also a number of folks from Crown Castle, who is the tower developer and owner, and AT&amp;T as well, and I appreciate your consideration of this matter, and I'll hold the rest of my time for any questions or response. Thank you.
Okay. Are there, you have another?
Yes, sir, we have.
Next person in line for...
Carolyn Lotterbach, and we have three minutes and two seconds remaining on the clock.
Not a problem. I'm Carolyn Lotterbach at 649, whoa, 649 Citation Trail in Milton, I'm in Triple Crown. I am actually on the homeowners, on the board of our homeowners association, and have been for three, this is my fourth year. We have worked quite diligently with Richmond Glen HOA and city staff on the Star Soccer and then this solution, and we've actually worked quite hard and think that this solution really works best for everyone all the way around, and so we are in support of this, this agenda item.
Do we have any more comments in support?
That's all in support, sir.
Okay. Do we have any comments in opposition?
We have five. The first coming from Brian Dodrell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Dodrell with the Law Firm of Robertson-Dodrell here on behalf of Brightwater Homes. This is the property owner to the east of this proposed rebuild, and the property owner most affected by it, this is the property owner that's 49 feet from the setback that, I think Council misspoke when she said that she meets all the setbacks, obviously they're here on a number of variances, including the one that moves this 95 feet from the nearest house in the Brightwater Homes subdivision. We have filed constitutional and legal objections with City on this, we are in support of the suggestion that there be more discussion. By the time we got the letter notifying us about this, it had already come before the City the first time. And as I said, the nearest house is within the 95 feet of this. I'm going to give the rest of the time to the applicants. I have additional copies of the legal and constitutional objections if y'all would like to pass out.
Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Michael Grody.
Good evening. I'm a resident of this new community. In fact, just purchased their.
Excuse me.
Sir, can you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Michael Grody, 393 Gables Walk, Milton, Georgia. So my wife and I just purchased a home here and unbeknownst to us, we found about this the same time Charlie and our developers did and, you know, it sounds like a wonderful opportunity for AT&amp;T as I sit back in the crowd and for them, it's a perfect situation. You know, for Triple Crown, it's a great situation. It's not in their neighborhood anymore. For me and my children and the health risk it poses, it's a great concern. Fulton County, Fulton County schools took the initial step in this and banning these in and around their schools for those very same health risks. There are roughly 33 towers, I believe, within a four-mile radius, 101 antennas in that same area. Seems like the solution could be found. I'm in support of our developer and hoping that you guys will find it a way today to be able to postpone this vote, allow ourselves and our attorneys and our community to be able to find a way to come up with a solution, sit down with the applicants and find out what the best alternative is for this proposed tower. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Our next comment comes from John Gorman.
My name is John Gorman. I live at 386 Gables Walk. I'm in the process of building a house here in Milton. I currently live in Alpharetta. I've lived in Atlanta for 20 years and with all respect to Mr. Lagerblum, I've never seen 195-foot pine tree in the state of Georgia. I'm still looking. So it may be difficult to get something to blend into the, to the landscape of Milton, which is one of the reasons that my family and I chose to relocate to Milton from Alpharetta. It's the picturesque rolling countryside. It's the horse on the city charter. We're looking for a different lifestyle, for a more rural feel. And I think if we add some blight, what I'll call blight, to the landscape, I think that takes away from the rural character of the city of Milton. So I just wanted to make that point. I also wanted to make the point and represent my next door neighbor, the Engelbrecht family, who had sent in a letter to the city of Milton over the last day. So I would like to read just a few brief comments from there, if you would. I'll just read some excerpts rather than reading the whole thing. "We're unable to attend this evening's meeting and have asked our neighbor to present our opposition to the variance modification plan for the U-16 cell tower on Batesville Road. We have many concerns about the construction of a tower so near our home." I'll address two in the email. They go on to talk about Fulton County schools banning the use of, or the application of cell tower on their properties. "I think we just don't have a good understanding of the effects of RF radiation at this point on ourselves as individuals and especially on the developing children that we have. They have four children in their home and the health is their number one concern. And why would we not seek the same protection for them at home as they receive at school? Our neighborhood, Horizon, High Grove, is being built by Brightwater Homes, is under development and it will certainly deter or raise concerns and objections from individuals looking to purchase homes in that neighborhood. Additionally, the tower is an eyesore as it stands, but building an even larger tower next to the neighborhood will adversely affect the value of our homes. The current tower is taller than the trees in the surrounding area and rebuilding a tower 45 feet taller is an unacceptable solution. We're seeking to protect the health of ourselves and our neighbors as well as protect the investment we've made in our homes and we wouldn't, we do not want to have a modified or a new tower built on Batesville Road." So that's on behalf of Jeremy and Lindsay Engelbrecht. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Shane Roach.
Good evening. Shane Roach with Brightwater Homes. Thank you for hearing our comments tonight. You've heard from some of our customers, neighbors, concerned residents in the area. To be brief, the timing for us to respond to this proposal has been very brief, especially given the holidays, the season, the way the holidays fell in the weeks. We've had effectively two to three business days at best to come up with a response to this. We've worked very diligently over those few days. In fact, had a productive meeting earlier today. Want to reiterate the things that we're concerned about. We'd like some time to meet with the applicant, who has not yet contacted us. We'd like some time to spend with them to understand what the alternatives are. We're concerned about a 30% increase in height of a tower that is only 48 feet from a property line. Under current regulations, a tower of this size, to the point made earlier, would be required to be 293 feet from an adjacent property line. Significant variance being requested here in terms of proximity to an adjacent property, significant increase in the height of the tower, 30% taller. We certainly have the concern about the look of a 200-foot pine tree that needs to be discussed and we'd really like the time to meet with the applicant, understand what alternatives have been considered, maybe suggest a few of our own. Time to understand fully what's being proposed and what, what the other options are out there. Understand the expedited process, understand the desire for net zero new towers in the, in the city, but we'd like to, we'd like some time to really understand this proposal fully before it's voted on. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last comment in opposition is from Charles Bostwick.
Charlie Bostwick, Brightwater Homes, 230 Hamman Drive, Sandy Springs. Want to read from another neighbor here who's, who was not able to be here. Again, short notice for all these people that didn't have a chance to be, be involved like they'd like to be involved in their community. These folks live about less than 250 feet from the tower itself, about 200 feet from the property line next to this property. It says, "Attention, Mayor Lockwood and City Council Members, this is from the Marsdens, Tom Marsden. I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight regarding extension of the cell phone tower at 330 Batesville Road. However, I am strongly opposed to this variance and want to again voice my concerns. My family lives only 200 yards away from the proposed site and we would be exposed to this tower every day. This location is a residential area and not the right place for 195-foot cellular tower. The current zoning laws are there to protect homeowners like myself from an infringement like this. I strongly urge the council to protect this residential area and vote no to this variance." Want to point out just a couple other significant items. One is that this tower is obviously much, much larger than any tree out there and much bigger than what's there. Everybody knows that, everybody's clear on that. But the other significant part is that the tower that's currently there is this slick stick that does not have protruding members. So it, so it, you know, as much as towers can be, it is not objectionable in the way that, that anything that has protrusions from it will be. That's a significant change. This isn't just going higher. This isn't just allowing something to be higher based on existing ordinance, but it's asking to be much closer to the property than an ordinance allows and to change the type of structure that it is significantly. And the other thing that's important to note is that Mr. Bowen, the property owner, told me before we bought this property nine months ago that the tower that's there will not be any higher, higher than it is today, will not have protrusions. I understand technically that putting another tower beside it means that tower didn't get taller or have protrusions, but I think the, the effect is very different than what he, he had committed. And so the applicant's had six months to work on this.
One minute remaining.
We've had only a couple of days because of the time we've been aware of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, I'm not on the list, but I would like to pose also Frank Morrow, Jason Rock. Mr. Morrow, have you filled out a comment card?
No, I didn't, I didn't know.
If the council's okay with it, I'll be, let you speak as long as you fill out a comment card within the amount of time here. You guys are all right with it?
You can come on up and just state your name and address.
And you can fill out the card afterwards.
Cards are on that table.
Just no more questions.
My name is Frank Morrow. I'm an adjacent property owner at 290 Batesville Road. You know, back in '03 when this cell tower was initially proposed, many residents in the area opposed it and the commissioners in Fulton County turned it down six to one and it was proposed to be a stealth tower. After it was turned down, Sprint took it to the courts. The courts overruled, however, the specifications of the tower remained in that it would be stealth, a one pole looking like a light pole. You know, it's nice that Triple Crown is here, you know, approving it for our residents, our area, our children, since it's no longer affecting them in an area where it was more in compliance with zoning. Over here, you need a variance for approval of this because of the tremendous increase in height, a 30% increase in height. It's going to affect property values, let alone the aesthetics. So I asked the committee, the council here to either vote it down or give us more time. We just received this thing just before Christmas. You have Christmas vacations. There's not enough time to do research on this. You know, the Telecommunications Act, you know, gives local governments the authority.
Let me butt in, Mr. Morrow, since we are out of time. If you plan on speaking longer, I can ask the council for an extension of time unless you're about.
I'm just, I'm just about finished.
Okay. You guys are covered.
Okay.
If the applicant would like.
Right. In seeking, in seeking a variance, it's infringing on the adjacent property owners in that the requirements, as you know, is one and a half feet per foot in height for cell towers, which would make it approximately 283 feet on each side and it doesn't meet those requirements. So we ask you to vote no or defer so we could have time to regroup and, and see if there are better alternatives in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is that all the public comment?
That's all, sir.
If that's all the public comment, I will close the.
The applicant.
I'll let the applicant. The applicant wants to leave at all time. Couple of minutes.
Just, just to clarify a few things, if I may, and I apologize to the extent I misspoke. When I, first I want to clarify, this isn't here before you for variance to height. This height that's proposed at 195 meets your ordinance restrictions on height and that it not be more than 30% higher than the existing tower or lighted by FAA. And this 195-foot tower would not need to be lighted by the FAA and that height is within the 30%. So I do want to clarify that. The other thing I want to clarify, to the extent I misspoke, with respect to setbacks, certainly that's the reason that we're here before you tonight. If we met all of the setbacks of the current ordinance, this tower height extension, by the way, would have been administratively approved. The reason we're here before you tonight with a public hearing is because we are requesting variances in two respects. One with respect to setback. When I said they're the same, I mean that the tower is located closer because we're moving in approximately 22 feet closer to Batesville Road. We meet the setback as with respect to Batesville Road. We still are requesting variances on the other sides of the tower, but we are not moving the tower any closer than the existing site than it already is, than the existing site is already to property lines. So yes, we are within 49 feet of our closest adjacent property line, but the existing tower is within 49 feet of that property line as well. So I do want to clarify that. The other thing I want to clarify is that with respect to the setbacks, there's something called a fall zone radius. We've submitted with our application a structural integrity letter that confirms that if there is a structural failure, which is, by the way, highly unlikely, highly unlikely, if there is, this tower is designed to fall upon itself, right? So it collapses in segments, just like any other tower, frankly, despite the design, whether it's a tree, whether it's a light pole or anything else, they're designed to fall upon themselves and not topple straight over. So it wouldn't fall on our adjacent property owners. It would fall within our property if it fell. So I do want to clarify that. We are certainly happy to meet with the community. I do want to stress, we've met our obligations with respect to filing. I certainly appreciate it's the holidays, just like I appreciate it's going to be four degrees outside and just like the last time I was before you, we had had a balloon test on the only day that it snowed last year at that Star Soccer site. So I, I do understand that and the applicant is happy to meet with folks. I don't want to be under any impression or give you the impression that the height of the tower somehow could be lower. All of those carriers that are currently on that tower, Sprint, T-Mobile, Verizon, currently, all have compromised coverage because their antennas are within that light pole. They are getting better coverage by moving to a higher location, just like AT&amp;T is getting the coverage that it needs. So not only do you have a situation where you're avoiding a tower near Triple Crown or in some other area right around here for AT&amp;T, you're also increasing the chances that Verizon, Sprint and T-Mobile will not come before you for another tower in the same general area or close by as well. So I just wanted to give you that thought. I'm certainly happy to answer other questions you may have and I appreciate your consider, consideration of this matter. Thank you.
Okay. If that's all the public comment, I'll close the hearing. Council is certainly welcome to ask questions of staff or, or the applicant. I do want to say that I know council members have talked with affected property owners and residents. We've had the, the pleasure of meeting this afternoon with some. We've also talked to the applicant and I believe there's, even though legally the city has until, I believe, the 19th where we have to rule on this. Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the applicant has agreed for a two-week deferral or extension that, to the 20, to the meeting of the 22nd, which is what, 16-day or whatever it is, to meet with the property owners and residents and whatnot. So again, that, I believe that's on the table if someone wanted to defer it and I know our city staff has stepped up and said they will initiate meetings and get right on that if our folks want to do that or the people that have spoken tonight. So, you know, we'll, we'll open it up for a motion or again, if there's any questions that somebody wanted to ask now, but I wanted to throw that out that there is an option of deferral at that point. Bill?
I'll, I'll, I'll introduce the juror. I had questions.
Go ahead with your question, Doug.
For the applicant, Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned there are three existing carriers, Verizon, Sprint and T-Mobile.
Yes, sir.
AT&amp;T would be the, the fourth carrier.
Correct.
Did you say there'd be a position for a fifth carrier?
There is room. Structurally, the tower, if it were replaced, there would be room for another applicant or co-locator at the 150-foot level or below if they wanted to go lower. So structurally, it would be built to accommodate that. It's unlikely that's going to happen because you've got all of the carriers, for the most part, locating on this tower, but certainly it's available.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
I guess, one quick question. And just from my understanding, a lot of people are concerned about RF waves, things like that, and I'm just curious, from a, with the new tower versus the old one, are we considering that the RF waves in the ground level would be lessened or more so? I'm just not sure about how that works.
So generally, if you think about a cell tower or anything, your radio, police scanner, baby monitor, any kind of device that operates on radio frequency waves, the closer you are, the more affected you might be by those waves. By having a taller tower, you're bumping up. Right now, all those carriers are roughly between 110 and 150 feet in that tower. Radio waves don't go straight down. They go out and you have to look at the power that's generated by the way, radio wave. That's going to dissipate over time, right? The further that it has to travel, the less of an impact it's going to have on anyone or anything around it. So if you move everyone up 40 to 50 feet, 30 feet, you're moving everybody who is transmitting a radio wave that much further from the ground, which technically then is safer or has less of an impact because they're higher up, the radio frequency wave is that much further up. That's a very, very basic description of it. The other short answer is that radio waves, I mean, everything in our house, microwaves... then is safer or has less of an impact because they're higher up, the radio frequency wave is that much further up. That's a very, very basic description of it. The other short answer is that radio waves, I mean, everything in our house, microwaves, I said baby monitors already, your phones, their cordless phones, does anybody even have a plug-in phone anymore? I don't think you can buy them. Those all work on the same technology. Those are all governed by the FCC. AT&amp;T's license, Sprint's, Verizon's, they all have to certify every year with respect to every single one of their facilities that the cumulative effect of a facility on a tower is not going to exceed limits set by the FCC. And the FCC looks at those limits, and they say that the tower is going to be, they look at the worst-case scenario, that a tower is operating at full power one hundred percent of the time, that those antennas are always operating, and they set a limit. None of these carriers, and they say, too, you have to take into account, we're adding AT&amp;T antennas, you have to take into account every carriers when looking at the tower as a whole. And all of these carriers as a whole are not going to emit anything close to FCC limits for this particular location or for any of them. Otherwise, their FCC license would be pulled, not just for this area, but nationwide. I don't know if that answered your question?
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I guess I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to defer this till the January twenty-second meeting if the rest of the council is okay.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion from Councilmember Coats, second by Councilmember Thurman, to defer this item to the January twenty-second meeting. Is there any discussion on that? I would just like to say, I want to thank both the applicant and the affected property owners for, number one, the applicant for agreeing to give a little additional time and put forth the effort to meet with the community, but also want to, you know, thank the community for bringing their concerns forward and ask that you guys make sure, you know, everybody works together, get the word out, and have a productive meeting and get as many folks there that are affected. So, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, procedurally, at this point, where we still have people in the audience that presumably would want to take part in the meetings that are going to happen or discussions that will happen in the next sixteen days, if I could just generally make an announcement that for those that would want to be involved in that who happen to maybe be here tonight, it would be helpful if you would see the clerk and at least give me a phone number or email address or something that's legible and current, so I can capture as much of that tonight as possible.
Okay. If everybody, make sure everybody heard, anybody that's interested in that meeting, if you would let the city clerk, suitably here, know before you leave tonight, give her her contact information and let you know. Okay, we could move on to new business.
Our first item under new business is consideration of a resolution appointing the chief judge of the municipal court for the city of Milton, Georgia pursuant to Article Five of the city charter, Agenda Item Number fourteen zero zero seven. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Part of my duties as mayor is every, at the beginning of every term, I am responsible for appointing a judge for the city of Milton. And for the last two terms, we've had, our chief judge has been Judge Zimmerman, Barry Zimmerman, and has done an excellent job. And we've also had as our associate judge, Judge Hansford, who's done a great job also. And Judge Zimmerman has, in fact, tonight being appointed as chief judge at the city of Alpharetta. And with that, will take some time, but we also certainly welcome and expect that he will also sit as needed in the city of Milton. He's done a great job, but I am privileged and honored to appoint Judge Brian Hansford as, that was our associate judge, to be our chief judge for the city of Milton. So tonight, I would like to nominate Chief Judge Hansford as our chief judge for the city of Milton. And again, we'll have the council ratify that. Just for the, I don't see our city attorney. For the record, neither of our judges, when they were hired, and Judge Hansford did I know personally at all, but over the last seven years, I have got to know Judge Hansford. So we have been known occasionally to ride a motorcycle together. That being said, I'm just saying that for the record, the mayor and council have no interaction with the court or any jurisdiction with the court. It's totally separate, so I don't believe there's any conflict there, and certainly would stay away from any conflict there. But again, just for the record, I do know Judge Hansford on a personal level, so. With that, I'll open it up for a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number fourteen dash zero zero seven, consideration of a resolution appointing the chief judge of the municipal court for the city of Milton, Georgia pursuant to Article Five of the city charter.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Thurman and a second from Councilmember Coats. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Congratulations, Judge Hansford, and step forward. I'll.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, Brian A. Hansford.
Aye, Brian A. Hansford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and truly conduct myself.
Well and truly conduct myself.
As chief judge of the municipal court.
As chief judge of the municipal court.
For the city of Milton.
For the city of Milton.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
And that I will faithfully enforce.
And that I will faithfully enforce.
And that the charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Milton.
Of the city of Milton.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
And that I am not the holder.
And that I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted.
Of any unaccounted.
Public money.
Public money.
Due to state or any political subdivision.
Due to state or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions as chief judge.
And in all my actions as chief judge.
Of the municipal court of the city of Milton.
Of the municipal court of the city of Milton.
Act as I believe for the best interests.
Act as I believe for the best interests.
Of the city of Milton.
Of the city of Milton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you for your service.
He's got a longer opening.
Okay, our city clerk, please call the next item.
Next item, Ms. Smith.
Which we have moved.
Eight.
Item four, so we'll move to item number eight.
Consideration of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and EMS Ventures, Inc., doing business as rural metro ambulance service to provide supplemental emergency medical ambulance transport services for the city of Milton. This is Agenda Item Number fourteen zero one four. Chief Bob Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What we have tonight before you is a supplement agreement to our rural metro contract, who's our ambulance provider for the city. This agreement here allows the fire department to add an ambulance to our system that will be able to transport patients that we consider to be critical when there is not a rural metro ambulance on scene or during critical times when we have a high call volume and there is a delay in response from the provider, rural metro. This ambulance would be staffed with city personnel, city firefighters. It would be one firefighter assigned to that unit on a daily basis, and then if it had to do a transport, we would take a firefighter off the engine and place him on the ambulance and go ahead and do the transport. This agreement, what it does is it enhances our level of service that we provide to the community today. In addition to that, this, what this does is it just supplements what we've already have in existence with rural metro today, which is a good, strong partnership. Tonight, I do have our regional director, Mr. Ken Simpson, with us from rural metro, and he's here to answer any questions that you may have. This agreement also, what it does is it allows any reimbursements for costs that are tied to this unit during transports, such as equipment, fuel, and personnel costs while they're on an ambulance or transport to the hospital. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Mr. Simpson is here as well, if you have any questions for him from rural metro.
Okay. Are there any questions for Chief Edgar first? Just questions, this basic, all the terms and all that we've discussed in the past and compensation and whatnot.
Correct. This is an agreement that we've worked hard, and Mr. Gerard has been well-involved with this from the beginning, and it's taken a lot of hours to get this agreement solidified to a point where we could bring it to you for approval.
And you know, again, I wish there was more of the public here, but these are the kind of things that our city staff has worked very hard on, that may be painful at some point and cost a little bit of money, but is in the total essence of goodwill for our public and public safety, and so we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Bill, did you have a question?
Where's this unit going to be parked, chief?
Currently, we have a rural metro unit at Fire Station Forty-three. That unit is going to be moved to Station Forty-two, which it'll put it centrally located, and we'll place our unit at Station Forty-three. The unit that we have today is, it's been a loaner to us as a twenty-four-hour unit. Once our unit goes in service, the twenty-four-hour unit for rural metro will reduce down to a twelve-hour unit, and then our unit will be a twenty-four-hour unit. So what it does is it puts two units in the city. Our unit will never leave the city, but that other unit provided by rural metro will have to obviously respond to calls as the closest unit responds. So when the call volume starts to increase in Alpharetta and Roswell, which it tends to do, that unit will be drawn down to that area to cover those calls, but our unit would remain within the city limits.
Thank you. Karen, and then Matt.
I believe, if I'm reading this spreadsheet right, that the reimbursement we expect to receive is only about nine thousand dollars per year.
Yes, and that's totally based on how many calls we, you know, we expect to make during that year. And it's only like, I think we base this number off of twenty percent of the call volume for the city. And that may be a little bit high. I don't want, I don't want to give the impression that that is revenue generating for us, that is not. But that's what we estimate it to be.
Well, obviously, public safety is, to me, is our first and foremost responsibility to the citizens, but I just want to make sure it's not such that, it's not more, it's not in rural metro's best interest just to let us take this over and our people end up having to pay double for a service they're not really receiving. So have we looked at all that to make sure that this agreement and the reimbursement makes it such that rural metro is not better served for their own by not responding to the calls and we don't end up having to respond to a much larger percentage of them?
And I understand your concern there, and we've put parameters in place within the agreement that prohibits that from happening. It goes through a review process between rural metro and the city, and then it goes up, and it starts going up to different levels, such as the Region Three Council, which they're the ones that actually issued the license for rural metro to provide the service in North Fulton. So it actually goes all the way to them to a point saying, why can't you provide the service that you've been licensed to provide? And I'd like to make, you know, if I allow Mr. Simpson to speak on that matter, because it's been a conversation that we've had many times.
So like Chief Edgar said, one of the things that we have discussed is obviously that concern, a lot of, and that is obviously a concern. We have a monthly MROC meeting with all the fire chiefs. That is one of the topics that is discussed and is reported the number of times that we had to, you know, use the unit and whatnot. Additionally, I think it's important to point out that we aren't billing for these services. In fact, we're going to, you know, per the contract, we will be reimbursing the city for them. So it's truly a benefit to the community. We place units out here and whatnot. It's just a fact of the matter that from time to time, you just end up with high call volumes. I mean, I've got eight, ten trucks out here, and sometimes all of them will be out on calls. And so rather than take a chance, Chief Edgar's been good enough to come up with this idea. We've come up with this contract.
So if this got up, you're expecting it to be around twenty percent. If this got up to forty or fifty percent, we would start looking to see what changes need to be made.
Yes, Mayor. I mean, obviously, it's in our best interest to respond to as many calls as we can. I mean, that's the business that we're in, and, you know, every time we don't, we aren't able to respond to a call, that's, I mean, frankly, that's revenue that we lose. That's additionally, you know, we want to have the positive public image of being there when you need us, when you call 911 and having a rapid response time. And fundamentally, that's what this agreement does, is it allows us, if we have those high call volumes, if we have a mass casualty situation in Roswell or Alpharetta, and all the resources we're taking down there, and, you know, one of your loved ones has to call 911, you know, we have the ability to, between this partnership, we have the ability to meet that need.
Who actually then gets the revenue on the calls that the city of Milton handles?
They're not billed. We reimburse the city. It's in the contract, it's on an hourly basis, and like Chief Edgar said, we end up reimbursing any supplies that are used.
So if a resident had an issue and the city of Milton was the one to have to respond and take them to the hospital, they would not be billed for the ambulance service just like they typically are billed by rural metro?
That's correct. They would not be billed, and ambulance services prohibited in the contract from either ourselves or the city to bill for the services.
Chief Edgar, what is the, are you seeing a rate of increase in our ambulance service needs in the city of Milton? Obviously, our population's, a lot of people moving here. I'm just curious what you've seen as far as that goes and how that trends.
What I've seen is with that additional unit that's been added to the city, which, again, was a temporary move to enhance our service until we were able to work through this contract agreement, I've seen an improvement. We were in a mid-sixty percentile in meeting the contract agreement that we had before, and that was some of the, you know, discussions we've had in the past. And just looking at last month's numbers, that we were in the closer to ninety percentile with that additional unit. So that unit's making a difference in the city. My concern is when that unit is pulled from the city, we're right back down to where we don't have anybody available to do a transport. And if our ALS engines and our paramedics get on scene, and they have to make the determination that that patient needs to go to the hospital now, and we don't have a unit that's, we have a unit that's fifteen minutes away, that's time, and that's critical for patient care. So that's the reason for this, is to have that unit there in case we need it.
Chief, who's responsible for maintaining the unit number one? And if our personnel are going to be operating this unit, how are we covered from an insurance standpoint?
The unit's maintained by the city and our personnel, just like we do any other piece of fire apparatus. The maintenance is not expected to be high. It's not like a fire truck. It's more, it's more like a large pickup truck. So the maintenance is a lot less, and it's something that can be done locally where we don't have to send it off to one of these fire manufacturers or something like that and pay those specialty rates because of a specialty piece of apparatus. The cost to run it and operate it is all being reimbursed through rural metro. They're going to pay for any fuel that's used while we're on a call, and any equipment and any supplies that we use, they're paying for that. And they'll maintain that and own that equipment, such as a life pack and a defibrillator and all that. They're going to provide that equipment to us, and then they're going to be responsible for maintaining that. So the only real maintenance that we have is just the apparatus itself, the piece, the ambulance itself.
Since our personnel are going to be operating it, who's, are we covering operation of that unit from an insurance standpoint?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, the insurance falls under the city for the operation of the vehicle, but while we're on a medical call, we fall, we fall under rural metro's license. But we still fall under our medical director as a co-medical director with rural metro. So we're following the same protocols, but we're, you know, working together as medical direction under both medical directors, and they both agreed, you know, to do that. But again, the insurance and the liability and all still comes back to the city, just as if we were on a call with our paramedics on an ALS engine.
Thank you. And again, this all, you know, goes back, I'm just making a general comment, but, you know, it is going to cost us some money, but, you know, if it. know, it is going to cost us some money, but, you know, if it saves somebody that's in here, one of our citizens or a loved one, it's worth the money, and we were paying a premium, or we couldn't pay a premium to have more coverage, this is probably going to be more effective dollar-wise for the city, so I, you know, commit both parties for working together on something like this. Anybody else? No, I'll open for a motion.
I'll move to approve a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and EMS Ventures, Inc., DVA rural metro ambulance service to provide supplemental emergency medical ambulance transport services for the city of Milton, Agenda Item Number 14-014.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Lusk, approval of this item, and a second from Councilmember Morik. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, city clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution of the city of Milton consenting to expansion of North Fulton Community Improvement District. This is Agenda Item Number 14-015. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and council, this is a formality that the North Fulton CID has asked us to do. They're expanding their footprint, not any of it is expanding in the city of Milton, but because the CID does incorporate into the city of Milton, they're asking the cities of Roswell, Alpharetta, and Milton to consent to the expansion of it. I see no reason why we wouldn't support this. The expansion is actually occurring in the city of Roswell. This resolution just encourages them to do that and offers your support, nothing more, nothing less.
Any questions?
Have they, or have we seen any more participation from Milton businesses in the CID?
We've not, and you know, as the map, excuse me, as the map lays with the CID that exists today, the one we have to get through to be able to really continue to expand into Milton is Verizon, it's the big one across the street, and as you know, there's a contiguous requirement into expanding the CID, and until such time as Verizon is really interested in coming onboard with that, or we get some development next to us and adjacent to us that we can get around Verizon, that's really kind of a sticking point. We've approached them within the last four months, and they're just simply not part of their business strategy at this point to be a part of it, so we continue to move forward, but, you know, Kimberly Clark, that for the longest time was the road lockdown in Roswell, where if you couldn't get Kimberly Clark, you couldn't expand it, and that's kind of our Verizon at this point.
Okay. Go open up for a motion.
I'll move to approve Agenda Item Number 14-015.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Morik, second by Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous. Okay, city clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution adopting the city of Milton Parks and Recreation Department Facility and Fields Use Policy. This is Agenda Item Number 14-016. Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you identified when you were swearing in the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, parks and facilities in the city of Milton are growing and continue to grow. This past summer, we identified the need to establish formal rental policies for these facilities. What we have before you today represents three months of hard work by the Parks and Rec Board. In that time, we've studied, and the Parks and Rec Board has studied, five other Parks and Rec agencies to gather the best of their ideas. We worked with our legal counsel to put together this policy for facility and fields use, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have at this time. Thank you.
Not really a question, just a comment, I just want to congratulate you and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for the work you guys did on this, because I saw the challenges that we had this summer with what was going on, and good job. I see Scott over there looking back. So I just, I read through it, word for word, like it all, and I just want to congratulate you, I think it was very good.
Thank you very much. The Parks and Rec Board really put, they sunk their teeth into this, they really embraced it and worked on it. Very, very proud of working with that group.
You can tell.
Anybody else? I'll just echo that, though, we're excited, that's one of the exciting things, and, you know, I wouldn't say it's easy, but the things that people like is to see park programs moving forward and whatnot, and I know that can get tough because everybody has a different idea, but thank you for you and the board and everything you guys have done to move us forward.
Thank you.
Good job.
On behalf of the Parks and Rec Board, thank you all very much.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the consideration of a resolution adopting the city of Milton Parks and Recreation Department Facility and Fields Use Policy, Agenda Item Number 14-016.
Second motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Coontz, second by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Suti, you will call the next item.
This was added under approval of the meeting agenda, consideration of a resolution of the city of Milton, Georgia enacting an emergency moratorium for 30 days to bar the acceptance of applications for rezonings to the CUP, NUP, TR, R2, and R2A zoning districts. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in front of you added by way of an emergency request, added to the agenda, a proposed short-term moratorium. This moratorium will allow the commencement of a review of the performance standards of various components of the city of Milton zoning code. That's, we've heard some feedback along those lines even this evening. It is an ongoing concern as to whether the performance standards in those zoning designations meet the needs of Milton at this time. It is the request of staff and the best interest of the city that we go ahead and adopt a short-term moratorium that Georgia law allows us to enact without a public hearing. In the meantime, my office will work with the city manager's office to run a legal ad, and we will then in fact have a public hearing for a longer-term moratorium that we'll run until such time as we're able to bring you back proposals for potentially modifying the Milton zoning code. So, Mr. Mayor, this resolution would simply place a moratorium which would bar the acceptance of applications to rezone property in the CUP, NUP, TR, R2, and R2A zoning categories for or along the following timelines. First of all, from 30 days from the date of adoption of this resolution, or approval by the city council of an additional moratorium after a public hearing, or upon the adoption of an amendment to those zoning designations, whichever occurs first. Mr. Mayor, upon adoption of this this evening, it will take into effect, and then we will run the legal ads for the longer moratorium.
Okay. Anybody question for Ken on this? We all discussed it, but just wanted to make sure. All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution of the city of Milton, Georgia enacting an emergency moratorium for 30 days to bar the acceptance of applications for rezonings to the CUP, NUP, TR, R2, and R2A zoning districts.
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Lusk, second from Councilmember Coontz. Before we vote, just comments, you know, hopefully for the record, the public will see that we are going to try to take a little bit of time and address some things, but also for the record, any previous application that's already in the works, this is not a factor, so that's grandfathered in, but this is just the first step that we're looking at to handle some of the development situations that the city of Milton's been faced with now, so thank you everybody for being involved. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Okay, I'll, moving on to reports, just want to say congratulations for those that got sworn in or re-sworn in. Councilmember Longoria, we'll congratulate him when he does. It's good working with you guys and look forward to four more, and well, it's working with you guys that are already here, so. Does anybody on council have anything they want to share?
I just want to say I enjoyed watching the football game tonight. It's been 365 days since Notre Dame was here last time.
How did I know? How did I know you'd feel bad?
We will be there again.
I think next year's going to be a good year.
Next year's going to be, yeah.
All right, I'll move on to staff.
I think, Mr. Mayor, we don't really have much tonight, and then we're through the holiday season, we'll start to pick back up again after the first of the year. If I could draw your attention at some point when you sit down, I know you do this a lot at home, go to the city's website, next time you do, go home and go to the city's website, if you take a look, and I think you'll be pleasantly surprised and pleased with the find a form and permit page, and how it's become a whole lot more user-friendly. It's been a lot of work, it was a mountain of work to standardize everything, but it's looking sharp, and we've gotten really good feedback on how easy it is for people to find the forms and process that they need to find to be able to do business with us, so I just ask you to take a look at that, because it owns of interest to you when you have, when you have a moment. I got to hold the SEC line tonight, I still don't think I can say War Eagle, but I, at least hope they play strong against that other team from the state of South Dakota.
Okay, that'll conclude our meeting, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion, a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.